I'd like to address the mayor and city council with a few words of scripture in light of our celebrating the Lord's resurrection. The words in Philippians read, "Wherefore God also hath highly exalted him and given him a name which is above every name," that is, at the name of Jesus. Every name should bow of things in heaven and things in earth and things under the earth, that every tongue should confess that Jesus Christ is Lord to the glory of God and the Father. Let us pray. Father, we are thankful for your son and our Savior, Jesus Christ, and we come through his name tonight, Father, on behalf of everyone that serves in our local government. Father, we thank you for the service of the mayor, the councilman, the councilwomen, and the others that make up the leadership of our community. Father, we pray for their health. We thank you for their guidance. And we pray for wisdom as they make the decisions to watch over and care for our community and to guide us into the future. I pray, Lord, that tonight you would bless the meeting in every way possible, that you would be glorified. I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Chris, please. Raise your hand. All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Word learned.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, James. Thank you, Brother Rick. Appreciate you all. Call April 14th, 2022, the regular meeting to order. The first thing on the agenda, Chris, is see if we've got a call, please, a road call.
Mr. Skaggs?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Holt?
Here.
Mr. Blakey?
Here.
Mr. Barnes?
Here.
Ms. Daniel?
Here.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you, Chris. The acceptance of the minutes, Chris has sent them out. You should have them in your package. We looked over them. Does anybody have any questions with the minutes from the last meeting? Any additions or subtractions? If there are none, I need a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Sure, I need a second.
I'll second.
Chris, you need a road call.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Skaggs?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Blakey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Chris. The next thing on the agenda is acceptance of the cash disbursements or financial statements. Chris likewise has sent all the bills out to you. You should have them in your packet. Are there any questions on any of the bills?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Motion, Tommy. You've got a second about. Larry?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Skaggs?
Yes.
Mr. Blakey?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Chris. The next thing, we're going to start off with old business tonight because I've asked Terry to come to explain this and who's going to have to leave. He's got a ballgame to attend. It's the Kentucky Highway 80 rehabilitation project. It's a... Terry, if you will come in and explain to the... Come on up and explain to the press and...
It's a... Well, I mean, this project is something the city of Russell Springs, we've been working on for a couple of years, looking at the older infrastructure and these thicker clay lines and tamarind and trying to figure out areas to start doing work in. So we've come up with a project. We call it Kentucky Highway 80 Rehabilitation. And what that is, that consists of the area there around Sable Lot at Robertson Street and going east up to Owens Town Road. Basically, that section up through there and an area on Butler Drive and also a little bit of manhole rehab around Roy Lane around through there. It consists of about 4,900 feet of 8-inch line. What they do is the clay line that's there, the existing line, they literally will pull a folded, formed PVC layer through there and they blow it up with heat and that, you know, takes and brings the integrity of the pipe back to its PVC inside. And then at that point, they'll go in, there's about, I think, 40 reconnects, we want to be doing, 40 homes. They'll be completely cutting into that and just reconnecting and hooking back to the existing lateral. This is going to eliminate more of the process of eliminating the I and I that we've been dealing with for years that a lot of the older towns do. And it's just a... Actually, just a small portion of what is yet to do as time goes on. And that's where everybody's at now is doing a lot of re-lining versus then digging it up and completely relaying it. So it's... This project's about 90 days is what they give on it. They'll do it a lot quicker than that probably if the weather holds out. So, you know, again, if you see work in that area, that's what's going on, probably be some traffic stopping, you know, it'll be a little bit of a hindrance, but I think it'll be some good work to get done and we'll see some results from that, so.
You may get any questions for Terry about it.
So the I and I is the groundwater that's coming into their sewer systems?
Yes, that's the infiltration and impact. It's in the old lines and stuff.
And we have to pay for that, don't we?
We do. And once you seal that up, then obviously you keep that groundwater out rather than it getting in.
Great.
And it going through our meters and being charged for it. That's correct.
Great.
I need a motion for the contract. We bid this out and Aiken's Construction got the contract. They were the low bid at $419,795. So, Chris, do you need to read anything on that?
No, this is the contract by then. We have a pre-construction meeting on Monday. This award has been... It's gone through the ad office as well. They've reviewed it and also it's gone through Division of Waters. Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, I'll gladly make the motion.
And I'll gladly second it.
You made a motion. Terry has seconded.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Blakey?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Skaggs?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Terry. Appreciate it.
Next thing, we'll go right into new business now, and it's a presentation of an honored
citizen, Ms. Jeanette Marson. Jeanette, would you come up here, please?
I think we need to just keep you.
Come on up here. I'm going to let... I'm going to let Jeremy, and he's going to present this to you because Jeremy, I've worked with you a little bit, but I'm a new kid on the block and I know you and Jeremy's worked together ever since you've been here.
We have.
And for years and years and years, so I'll let him read that to you.
Well, thank you. Yeah, Jeanette Marson worked on many things. She was executive director for how many years at Terry's?
About nine. Nine years.
Lots of water under the bridge between us.
Exactly.
You will be missed.
Oh, thank you.
But this is a pro... This is from the city of Russell Springs. It's a proclamation, whereas Jeanette Keller-Marson is well-known for her distinguished career as an executive director of Russell County Tourism, and whereas she has championed on collaborative approach with our beautiful city, and we are pleased to have such a distinguished individual in our program. Don't cry.
Thank you.
Got a few words you want to say?
Well, I love you all. I love Russell County, Russell Springs. We still have property here, so we'll be coming back all the time, every weekend. And just remember, the more people that come in, the less taxes we who live here have to pay. I have a T-shirt that says that. I do. Thank you all. Thank you. I love you all.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thanks for your service. Thank you, Jeanette.
The next thing on the agenda is Mr. Steve Brasko. Steve has been the Russell Springs IDA on the board for 31 years, and it's an honor to give Steve, come on up, Steve, a nice plaque for 31 years serving the city of Russell Springs and Russell County. And he's helped bring a lot of stuff here to the city and the county, so we just wanted to bring him up and recognize him and thank you for all he's done for us. Steve, I hope you like it. It's a little heavy, don't you worry.
That's nice. That's nice. Well, I certainly appreciate the recognition and, you know, it's been an honor and certainly, I'll say rewarding to have served as a member of the Russell County Industrial Authority since 1991, since its inception. I say rewarding because it certainly has... We've seen a lot of progress and there's been a lot of things happen. If you think back over 32 years of all the industry that's taken place, we've had a big hand in a lot of that. You know, it's... And I've said to many of our leaders over time, it's not... I've certainly not done it for any recognition as none of our members of the industrial authority have, and that's one reason I think it's always been so successful over the years. And, you know, I feel like that it's been a service that I could offer with my business background, with 45 years in the construction industry, as well as a lot of industrial projects. I felt like there was some knowledge that I could provide to the community and help promote and grow. And again, that's been rewarding to do that. Moving forward, I certainly have offered to everyone, counties, the cities, and the industrial authority to help and support in any way I can in an unofficial capacity, but I'm still here to help and support and grow Russell County and our community all that I can. And we're all vested here and want to do the best that we can for our community. So I appreciate the recognition. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. You're thirty-two. You must have gone on there before.
Started early.
The next thing on the agenda is I would like for Ray Barrett's family, we got a Ray Barrett memorial gift tonight, if y'all would come forward. Ray was a police officer, council member, commissioner. He was part of the city of Russell Springs. And when we lost HM and Ray, we lost two of the pillars of this community. And if everybody would have known what both them has done, we couldn't put it on words, we couldn't have a flag big enough, we couldn't have nothing to make it for them. But if you want to explain to the council what we're doing here...
Yes, of course. Well, thank you first for the opportunity even be here, and I feel, you know, very appreciative for everything that you all have done for my dad in the past and, of course, he for you and for the county. He was very prideful in what he represented here and in what you as a county represented, and he was very quick to tell you that. But on the other side, he was a very humble man too, and he didn't always want all those things that he did to be known, but I do know that he did several things that I'm very proud of and the family is very proud of. So thank you for the friendship. Thank you for just knowing him and accepting him into your community. Came here, we were thinking probably in the late 70s, early 80s, from Indiana, and that's where I live now, is in Indiana. I've met a lot of great people here in the last, you know, since actually January, that's the January 18th of this year, and we were just so pleased and so happy to know how he embedded in this county. So anyway, we wanted to do something that in honor of Dad, something that we know that he would be so happy about and knowing that he had a little bit of contribution. And we, as a family, just think of that donating to the cemetery, which was part of his everyday life. He always went by from what I understand, checked on the cemetery, made sure everything was okay, and that's just part of what he did. But he was also a board member, and we know that there's a shelter being built there on the cemetery, Russell Springs Cemetery up here. I just went by and looked at it. It looks wonderful, such a good idea. I don't know where it actually came from, but it's a wonderful idea. So anyway, we just want to make a donation towards that building or that area, that cemetery, in honor of Dad. And again, thank you for letting us be here. So I'll just give this to you. I feel like they should be up here and not just me. Why don't you guys, please, come on, come on, please?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just to let you all know too about Ray, when we bought, when we put this together and we got a core phase that we're doing over at the cemetery and the second phase was to put the building up. Now, the first phase was to buy the two old houses and clean them up, and we did with the council's help. Thank you all, we got that done. And just to let you know, Ray lived over there on the cemetery for years, right next to it, him and Janice. And I remember going over and sitting under that big tree with him and stuff. So Ray Barrett is going to be terribly missed, and he was on the cemetery board when he passed, so we sure do miss Ray. The next thing on the list is I want James and Ronnie and Stan and Tom to come up here. This is... We've got gifts for them. These guys served in the Army for us, and all four of these guys, if you look on there, they got Agent Orange Medal. And if I'm correct, I'll let you, James, take over here for me. How many people has got the Agent Orange in the state of Kentucky?
Right now, as far as I know, we're the only four that has received the Agent Orange It's in the shape of like the Purple Heart, but Congress and Senate declared that Agent Orange, we didn't deserve the Purple Heart. But they said that since that Agent Orange, over the thousands and thousands of gallons that was sprayed on us, that since we didn't lose a body part or we wasn't killed, that we didn't deserve. So we've got an organization that started down in Tennessee that started the Agent Orange heart. Tom Burgess over here was the first one to talk to the gentleman down there in the organization to get it. And then he brought the information back, and then we filled out the forms and stuff, and Ergo Gudmundsen sent it to us via US mail. And really, really proud of this. For me, it's been 51 years. Ron, how many years it's been for you?
Since 1967.
Tom?
1967.
Stan?
Seventy.
So we are really, really proud for these, and we are hoping that the rest of the Vietnam veterans that I can get in touch with, that will fill out the applications and the information and get them one or two.
Well, the guy said 100,000 applicants already. And I don't know how many for Kentucky, but he says probably half is for Kentucky. So it's catching on.
Says, Larry Skaggs and I both contacted a representative, and it is going to be put on the floor here in Kentucky to recognize the Agent Orange heart.
Each state, they have asked each state to recognize it as a medal for Vietnam vets. We've had a lot of Vietnam vets will be down in Paul's University because they've already expired from cancer, most of it's cancer because of Agent Orange. So I didn't know James had already contacted Josh, but he had. And anyway, not this session because this session is drawn to close. But the next session, it will be presented to the floor of the state of Kentucky to recognize this medal.
And just to let you all know, James, I made him an honorary citizen. Tom, I made him an honorary citizen. And I made Stan an honorary citizen for the city of Russell Springs. But Ronnie is already honorary citizen, so we just had to make him an ambassador. Is that all right? You're ambassador of the city of Russell Springs now.
That's a little higher.
Yeah, I'm a little higher. We just had to go there for a while. We already have him as a citizen, so.
I have an office. I really, as commander of the DAV, thank you, sir. I appreciate you, all your work and any support you can give us and the friendship.
Hey, we just want to thank y'all, all the veterans, and the council was involved in getting these plaques, and so we want to thank y'all.
Very much welcome.
Thank you for your service, first of all, and just thank you.
Citizen of Russell Springs since 1961.
And then I was born in '61, so we're close, okay? Anybody want to thank a pitcher?
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, young lady. Thank you. It's about time Vietnam veterans got recognized.
Amen.
All right, the next thing, thank you, Janice. The next thing on the agenda is Brother Rick Neff. I got to get up and get, because we're kind of polar.
Eddie, I'm going to have to move, but you keep with me.
Hold on, sit back down, Ben. All right, the next thing is the Rick Neff Drive ordinance. I need to do a second reading on it.
Ordinance 2022-01, in ordinance to naming of a no-name street to Rick Neff Road, bid ordained by the city council of the city of Russell Springs, Kentucky, that whereas a request has been made and adopted by the Russell Springs zoning board to change the name of the no-name street addressed to Rick Neff Road. And whereas there are no citizens residing on that street, it is therefore ordained that the city currently known as no-name street will be changed to Rick Neff Road. After passage and publication of the orders, the Russell County 911 Board and the Lake Cumberland Area Development District shall be informed of this change past this 14th day of April 2022, be signed by Mayor Eddie Thomas, attested by Christopher Ramsey, city clerk. First reading March 10th, second reading was today, April the 14th, and publication it passed will be April the 21st.
Just to let you know, that ordinance was sponsored by Larry Skaggs, so if anybody got any questions about it, I need a road call vote, Chris.
Need a motion second.
Need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Skaggs?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Blakey?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Neff, can I have Rick come up?
Yes.
I have a shrink.
You can be like me, you can be taller than each other. Rick, we've got three of these, so we're going to let you keep one up.
Oh, thank you.
So I want to present this to you to let you know, and we will have the press to come out when we name the road or get the road signs and get ready to put them up as soon as the weather breaks them up. We'll have Rick out there and then we'll get the signs put up. Rick does a lot for this community. When the zoning said that they'd like to name the road, I couldn't think of anybody else any better to name it after. What he does, not for the city of Russell Springs, for the county, for the whole county. And anytime we've called him to come and lead us in prayer, since I've been on the council, I just, Mayor, you've always showed up and you always had words for, so I appreciate you, my friend.
Thank you.
So we're going to let you have this, let you know, we thank a lot of you here and just keep coming back when we call you.
I'll do, as long as the Lord keeps me here. My family and I moved here 22 years ago, and this community has become our home. It's been an incredible blessing to us. I do have one request, though, before I sit down. I heard there's no residents on this street, so I need somebody to witness to, someone moves in this short street, I'll be the first to know so I can share Jesus with them, right?
Right. We'll let you know first, but we let you better half go before you. So you'll get more accomplished, you will, brother.
I love Russell County. I love Russell Springs. Thank you.
Appreciate you, brother.
Are you done, man?
The next thing on the agenda is ordinance 2022-02, it's a mayor salary and compensation. We need a second reading on it, Chris, and it is sponsored by Timmy Hudson.
Ordinance 2022-02, in ordinance setting the annual compensation of the mayor from and after May 1st, 2022. Whereas the city of Russell Springs has continued to grow and develop, and as such, the operations in the city have also grown larger and more complex. Whereas the city council of the city of Russell Springs desires that the mayor's position be fairly and adequately compensated based on the expected job performance and duties of the mayor. Now, therefore, it be ordained by the city council of the city of Russell Springs, Kentucky, as following. It's number one, that the compensation of the mayor is fixed at $1,250 per month or $15,000 annually, commencing on May 1st, 2022. Number two, upon receipt of the annual compensation of the increase or decrease in the consumer price index of the preceding year from the office of local government, the annual compensation of the mayor may be adjusted to any amount no greater than that computed by the office of local government in any year providing this from ordinance 2014-02. Number three, the city of Russell Springs provide the mayor a city vehicle to drive instead of a monthly reimbursement for mileage. Number four, also the city of Russell Springs shall provide the mayor a monthly cell phone reimbursement, no greater than $100 per month. This is passed this day of April 2022, signed by Mayor Eddie Thomas, attested by Christopher Ramsey, city clerk. And we had the first reading last month, and this will be the second reading, and if it is passed, it will be in publication on April the 21st.
This is a decrease in pay.
Yeah. Thank you, Jerry.
I just don't mean, when you read it, it sounds like it won't replace you.
Got to be the first politician in history to take a cut and pay.
Any questions? Need a...
I'll make the motion.
Sure, you made a motion. Need a second?
I'll second.
Road call for...
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Skaggs?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Neff, can I have Rick come up?
Yes.
I have a shrink.
You can be like me, you can be taller than each other. Rick, we've got three of these, so we're going to let you keep one up.
Oh, thank you.
So I want to present this to you to let you know, and we will have the press to come out when we name the road or get the road signs and get ready to put them up as soon as the weather breaks them up. We'll have Rick out there and then we'll get the signs put up. Rick does a lot for this community. When the zoning said that they'd like to name the road, I couldn't think of anybody else any better to name it after. What he does, not for the city of Russell Springs, for the county, for the whole county. And anytime we've called him to come and lead us in prayer, since I've been on the council, I just, Mayor, you've always showed up and you always had words for, so I appreciate you, my friend.
Thank you.
So we're going to let you have this, let you know, we thank a lot of you here and just keep coming back when we call you.
I'll do, as long as the Lord keeps me here. My family and I moved here 22 years ago, and this community has become our home. It's been an incredible blessing to us. I do have one request, though, before I sit down. I heard there's no residents on this street, so I need somebody to witness to, someone moves in this short street, I'll be the first to know so I can share Jesus with them, right?
Right. We'll let you know first, but we let you better half go before you. So you'll get more accomplished, you will, brother.
I love Russell County. I love Russell Springs. Thank you.
Appreciate you, brother.
Are you done, man?
The next thing on the agenda is ordinance 2022-02, it's a mayor salary and compensation. We need a second reading on it, Chris, and it is sponsored by Timmy Hudson.
Ordinance 2022-02, in ordinance setting the annual compensation of the mayor from and after May 1st, 2022. Whereas the city of Russell Springs has continued to grow and develop, and as such, the operations in the city have also grown larger and more complex. Whereas the city council of the city of Russell Springs desires that the mayor's position be fairly and adequately compensated based on the expected job performance and duties of the mayor. Now, therefore, it be ordained by the city council of the city of Russell Springs, Kentucky, as following. It's number one, that the compensation of the mayor is fixed at $1,250 per month or $15,000 annually, commencing on May 1st, 2022. Number two, upon receipt of the annual compensation of the increase or decrease in the consumer price index of the preceding year from the office of local government, the annual compensation of the mayor may be adjusted to any amount no greater than that computed by the office of local government in any year providing this from ordinance
It'll start coming quarterly, being monthly quarterly. Shows you how many runs they had, if I can.
We're even up.
So, let me basically add one name and try to, Mayor. If they can, we'll get them on.
Yep. Yeah, real quick, Bobby, appreciate what you gentlemen do very much. I really do. And I think it's a thankless job, but you all still perform professional, and I'm very proud of you. A quick question about the helicopter LZs and stuff like that. Do you all not still respond to the hospital when one's coming in or out? It says zero, and it kindly, because that's, how do you count that?
We still go when they call us, yes.
So, that should be counted as a run, though, right? Because somebody has to take a truck and a person, maybe two sometimes.
It is, but that month, we didn't have any that month.
That month.
That month, because they started taking transport everybody to EMS base and find out for EMS bases to the hospital.
Okay, all right, that makes sense then, because I knew you guys would respond. I couldn't figure out why you had zeros there, you know? All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Bobby, Mark. Appreciate y'all. Any more questions for?
Now, you thank us, we thank you for what you do, because.
Absolutely. We can't do it without you guys.
Yeah, but still.
Sadly, I got to see what they do personally, and I really appreciate.
When I was a young man, I was in their shoes. And I did it up in Eli.
They do a great job.
They do a great job.
The next thing is the clerks' update. Chris, you got an update for us?
Yeah, I just want to let the council know that I've started working on next year's budget. And I'll be calling each individual council members to come in and meet with me over its budget through the departments. We'll go through it line like we have the last three or four years now. So, I just want to let you know, we'll have the first reading in May, and we'll have the second reading in June. That way, I can get it published in paper per state law. Also, we'll be meeting about some other things we might have to do, some special call meetings towards the end of the year. I'll let you know, as it always is, we have a little housekeeping to do every year right before the end of our fiscal year. So, I just wanted to let you all know that. And just thank you all for working on that. And if you got any questions, just give me your calling time.
Thank you, Chris. The next thing, has the council got anything? Any of the council members come in? Thank y'all, council, for all you do. But we're gonna, if y'all want to stay, you can stay, but we're getting ready to play a video. It's about eight minutes long. Kevin Williams was gonna try to make it tonight, and he couldn't make it. So, he sent down a video, of course, and he asked me if I would play it at the council meeting and let the council see it. And Wade, you might want to take a picture of the screen or something, I don't know. But if you want to go ahead and play that, Chris, and after we get done with it, then we'll have the mayor's report.
Taking a second. Technology's always great.
It's in the cloud up there. We just got to find it.
Anybody on this end of the table that would ask us to do it, writing?
No, not me.
Tommy could do it.
What?
Found something in the cloud.
My head's in the cloud. My head's in the cloud.
They just started doing an update.
Recalculating.
Yeah.
Well, he was supposed to send it yesterday, and we got it. I ain't even seen it. Chris sent it, I ain't seen it. He just got it like fifteen minutes before the meeting started. Just to give you a little bit, I met with them down there this week, Kevin and Jonell and the people who puts it on. And they're already starting to get it ready. It's May fourteenth, and they didn't have it for two years. But they had, they collected a pretty good lump sum of money. The last year, they had it, I think, over eighty thousand dollars for the youth in this community. And they, the last two years, they've been able to use that fund too to still help the unfortunate here in Russell County. Man, when he give me the numbers about how many people in Russell County that it helped, it blows my mind. It was just unbelievable, the numbers. And it goes through the church up at the Baptist Church. And he said he remembered somebody asked at the council meeting three years ago how they decided where the money went. And he might explain it a little bit. I might be saying this for him to say again. But he said it goes through them, and there are like four or five different people that keeps eyes on it. And it goes through the school system. I know a lot of y'all know Gordon Lester, he's kind of over distributing it out and stuff. And if you've got a kid in one of the elementary schools, the middle school, the high school, and it's unfortunate, they don't have tennis shoes or something, they'll go to one of these, like Gordon and I don't know who, Gordon's Russell Springs in Salem, I don't know who's Jamestown, but they've got one for each one. They'll go to them and say, hey, this kid needs a pair of tennis shoes.
Sherry Coffey's at Jamestown, I'm pretty sure. Is it Sherry Coffey at Jamestown, maybe?
I can't remember, but I know they've got them at each school. And they keep an eye on the kids. And if they don't have a coat, and it comes winter time, they come in without a coat. They make sure, you know, if they don't have it a day or two without a coat, they get them a coat. And hygiene, he said they spend all kinds of.
And I know most of you there, but I would love to be there in person tonight. This is my recording studio, my own place that I'm in tonight, I have a session. And I spend all my time producing music and traveling and playing music. I'm the bandleader for the Gaethers. I've been doing that for almost thirty years, in fact. And then I've been doing this professionally for about thirty-five or six years, whatever it's been. Before that, I had another eight or ten years in Russell County, playing the guitar on weekends and traveling in gospel groups, that kind of thing, working in radio there. Grew up and went to Russell Springs Elementary School, and then graduated from Russell County High School. Skipped the middle school because we didn't have one. And it went straight to the top that way. But those years are such great memories to me, you know? Right there on Main Street in Russell Springs. I grew up in Trail Park down Hills Highway there, which, incidentally, that looks lovely now, what's happening there. And a side note, we lost a dear friend this week to a car tragedy, a car accident. Mr. McLendon, who used to run up and down, he jogged there. And if he saw you, he would smile and wave. He was a good friend to all of us, and that's a tragic loss. But I'll tell you this, you don't see somebody jogging in Nashville who will turn their head and smile and wave. That doesn't happen, okay? That's unique to Russell County and to the life that I grew up in, running in and out of these stores. Hopper's Drug Store, Grider's Drug Store. My mom worked for years and years at the Dollar General store for Grady Harris down there. Ben Franklin Store, Mr. Horn had, and Mr. Lacy's Western Auto, and Mr. Wilson's Watch Shop. And then, of course, Patterson's Music Store is where my professional career, where the seed was planted and took root, taking lessons from Larry Beasley down there on those cold winter nights, you know? So, my memories are great of growing up in Russell Springs, Russell County. Now, you have a lot to decide tonight. I'm gonna fast forward, I'm gonna get through this, and I appreciate you allowing me time. Point is, we have kids growing up now who are not gonna have those kind of memories. They're not gonna have good memories of growing up because they're in survival mode every day. What I had, I had two parents who loved me, who were in the house and were hardworking people. We barely made ends meet, you know? We didn't have any extra money for anything. In fact, we were in the poverty column when you added up their two salaries. I remember the school forms coming home, and I knew where, what column I was in. But the times were so much different back then. Any need that I had was just supplied either by my parents. We had a great church family. We had great neighbors. And so, this is a different day and time. And I know you agree with me that we're just so much more isolated now. And so, we don't even oftentimes know the needs of the kid across the street or that there is even a kid across the street. And they're dying on the vine. A lot of them don't have the two parents in the house, most of them have single-family households. Some of them have no parent in the house, being raised by grandparents. The statistics on that are astounding. Grandparent raising two or three grandchildren on social security. Also, siblings raising siblings, sixteen-year-old raising a twelve-year-old, you know? Just to survive. And so, the statistics I've seen as of late in Russell County, basically, one out of three children is in poverty. So, the school system in the county serves a little bit less than three thousand students right now. So, if you just use that as a round number, a thousand of those kids are probably in that poverty column that I was in. And unlike me, where I had a lot of help, they're not gonna get that help unless we are proactive and jump in there. In twenty fourteen, we organized this little effort in the county to help kids, basically due to a little vision that I had of just trying to get in there and help kids like I was. And I know you, council people, you grew up very similar to the way I did. Some of you didn't have as good as I did, and you identify with me in the need. And in fact, the way you got where you are now, in this seat of responsibility, seat of leadership, is because you worked hard and you did right by people. If you boil it down to a couple of things, that would probably get it. Well, who's gonna show this next generation that? And how do they trust us? And how do we get in their lives? And so, that's what this was all about. We set up a little fund to be able to meet some immediate needs, like shoes, clothing items, hygiene items. The list goes on, but those basic kind of things, to say we care about you. We got your back. We believe in you. We believe you can be something. Foster their self-esteem and give them a goal and give them a vision of what a productive citizen looks like and what they can grow up to be. And we all like citizens, right? We want people who are productive and own businesses and pay taxes and that kind of thing. It's what we're trying to raise here. And this is a great step to be able to get in their life. And we formed that fund. Our goal was ten thousand dollars first year, about twenty thousand came in. It's grown every year. I haven't been able to do the fundraiser the last two years because of COVID. I actually thought I was going to be able to last year, and we prepared for it, and we had that resurgence of COVID. So, I didn't want to be irresponsible in some way, trying to gather a crowd together, because we always have a good crowd at the churches there when I do my concerts. So, very blessed with that. So, we're gonna do that. May fourteenth, I'm having a concert, six P.M., that's a Saturday, at the First Baptist Church in Russell Springs. They've always been gracious to host this, but every church in the county nearly gathers together, and they take offerings, they send checks. We have one church who handles the parking that night, another one helps with food. You know, it's truly a community event. And then I bring some of my friends. I've got a special guest along with numerous other guests coming this year. But Wes Hampton is coming. He is a big deal in Christian music and sings for the Gaethers. He's toured all over the world, and I've gotten to know this man over the last many years. And his heart is in the right place. He has four boys that he's raising. And so, he committed to me a long time ago, I'd love to come to Russell Springs and do this. And the dates have never worked out. He was always booked. So, this year, he's coming. Matthew Holt, who folks always ask about, he's a tremendous concert piano player, quite possibly the best pianist in gospel music at this point. I mean, he's amazing. He's gonna be there. I always love to rely on my friends, the Crossroads Quartet. We called them the Crossroads Four back when I was a kid. But Russell County can be proud of them and over fifty years in gospel music ministry. And they're no slouches, right? So, they'll be on the program. I got a bunch of surprises for you. But that's May fourteenth. I want you to put that down. And encourage all your friends to contribute to this. The best way to contribute is just call somebody that is working with this. Most everybody knows how to get ahold of somebody, the radio stations. You could call the mayor here, he puts you in touch with somebody. The church, and we'll get you fixed up. But we love for everybody, it just takes a little bit from everybody to make this go. The Chamber of Commerce, I'll be speaking there on Tuesday briefly at their luncheon. And the business community has always been great to help us. And the city has always found a wonderful place to contribute. So, thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you. Whatever you do is always just right. Please know that. And I'm honored to represent this cause and honored to speak before you tonight. I think I got all that done in just about four or five minutes. So, God bless you and the work you do tonight, and I hope to see you soon.
So, if anybody has any questions on that, you can call City Hall here or see any of us, and we'll get you in touch with the board to donate to. And then the next thing, he mentioned it on the mayor's report, what I have, only got a couple of things. And one of them was the flag down at Chataba Park. It's half-staffed, and that's a memory of Tommy McLendon. Tommy's been, lived down there, him and Jackie and Shirley, his mom, they've lived there for a long time. Ever since I was a little boy. And, you know, he's a loss to this community. Tommy was, he would, he'd run out down the highway. We've been able to try to put a balloon, our balloon rides together, and we've been trying to do that for two years. And because of COVID, we couldn't do it. So, we've met with him, and we're gonna try to do it this spring. So, I don't know where that is, but I'd like to do one moving forward in honor.
His memory.
I think it would be good because Tommy was, he was a good man. And he, him and his dad was in politics. He was the sheriff here at one time. And so, we just don't want to forget that family. Keep them in your prayers going forward. They're gonna need it. Shirley, I believe, is in her mid-eighties, and she.
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two.
Ninety?
She's gonna need it, because she's a sweetheart, I can tell you.
She's ninety, I'm pretty sure. I think so.
But just remember them and keep Jackie and Shirley and all them in your prayers. Then the next thing is, I was at the fiscal court meeting Monday night. The property has been paid for, the nine-one-one. Gary has brought us a check for a dollar. So, the property is paid for, and they okayed the architect to start on it down there. So, the new nine-one-one center will be down Brian Walters Drive. Before you get to the community center on the right there, you should see groundbreaking in the next, like, every four to six weeks, maybe.
Yeah, that'd be my guess, man.
If they get all the paperwork in and everything. Just to let you know that. And they told me, the fiscal court said, thanks for the council. Thank you, council, for supporting them, and thank you for working with them. And I said, I would deliver that message. So, if you see Gary, you know, tell him we'll work with him any way we can. And then the next thing is Happy Easter. City Hall will be closed tomorrow at dinner. And just to let you know, we'll be closing at twelve. And anybody need anything, they'll just have to wait till Monday. So, have a Happy Easter. Just remember what it's all about. It ain't about eggs. Just remember what it's all about. And that's all I got. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion with adjourn.
Thank you, Larry. Need a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, council. Appreciate you.